I like it. I'll do whatever.
Are they still for fifty percent that you want to price?
Yeah.
You and Kimzie?
We've talked about that.
Because that will be the final one.
Yeah.
The village president against the village board, uh, the school board president.
Yes.
Ready to go.
I do too.
Yep.
They may do a soccer skills competition.
Joe is not.
I need to act like you've never played soccer, though.
It's summertime, too. I need to sit with my kids for a couple hours.
Have them bring a basketball. Keep that as a soccer ball.
Six P M. I'll go ahead and call this village board meeting to order if you'd all join me in a moment of silence. And the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The other arm. What was that?
Saw camphers from his kids.
My son.
Adam, plug the other one.
Trustee Mann.
President.
Trustee Gerger.
President.
Trustee Charles.
Present.
Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Mal.
Here.
Trustee Scherchel.
Present.
And President Kimzie.
Present. Do we have any public announcements this evening?
Yeah, yeah. I'm officially retired and the city is breaking up. I'm not worried about any repercussions.
Congratulations on making it. All right, public comments on agenda topics. Uh, with three people down for lemon branch, which is our second meeting, so we'll do this again, but Darlene, you didn't have any topic down. Is it on the board or on the committee?
Well, I was going to do both, but.
Well, you should sign up both, which you have. On agenda topics for the board meeting right now. So if you would like to speak now, is that time?
But you said the leaf and branch was the second.
Lemon branch. Lemon and branches on the, on the committee agenda.
It's on the board.
It's on the board meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The leaf is.
The leaf. Was it? There's a lot on there.
No, that's his brain.
Would you guys like to speak to the actual contract or to the change in the green program?
Both, both.
Then if you want to talk about the change in the green program, that's now, so.
And the leaf.
It's all on the board. None of it's on the committee.
Yeah, none of it's on the committee.
None of it's on the committee.
Lemon, branch, leaf.
Nope.
Limb is.
Nope.
Forget it. Just come say what you need to say.
We get it done. But it's after the fact.
This is to change the green ordinance.
Let her, let her speak. We'll, we'll be five minutes debating whether she can speak or.
See, I thought that was on there that you were, because it was already written up and everything that you were going to vote on tonight.
So go ahead. Say, say your piece. Leaves, leaves, yes. Changes to the green program, yes.
When, when did you all talk about it in the open that it was going to go to four dollars instead of the two dollars that we were? The last time I remember any reference to it was when someone said that, well, we thought about maybe reducing it to a dollar instead of the two dollars because, you know, the fact that this, that, and the other. So that's why I'm confused because if you take the four dollars and you take that times the twelve months of the year, that's forty-eight dollars. And in the bids, you quoted there being. That's probably wrong. Only to speak up. Anyway, now I lost my train of thought. Then you take that times the fifty-nine hundred households that are in Chatham that are charged to four dollars. That's two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars in a year. You're going to what? But if I remember correctly on the bids, the high, the fellow or the company who all chose because they were the only ones to bid the three years, they're charging forty-seven dollars or forty-seven thousand dollars to do the job. What happens to the other two-hundred-plus-thousand dollars at the green program is, uh, so hopefully you will answer some of those questions tonight before you vote on it. Before you vote on accepting the person for the three-year contract. Because it's only fair to us to know what you're thinking and why they're thinking that this was a fair deal. I went to both meetings. The one where they presented the bid and then the one where they opened up the bids, and neither one of those meetings did I hear that you weren't going to be considered if you did a three-year contract. So the person that bid, the one which was the lowest bid, isn't even considered because he didn't buy the bid or his company or the company did not bid for three years. That's unfair. That's, it just seems like too much has happened behind the doors instead of in front of you. Yes. Just my opinion. Sorry. I hate standing here and talking. I hate it. But sometimes you feel like you have to speak up for the people. I mean. I don't know. That's just me. Sorry. But I'm sorry. I've been over my five minutes. Thanks for not saying it.
Sean, did you have something outside of the actual contract?
No, I wanted to discuss, no, I just wanted to discuss the lemon branch program.
Okay. Uh, Bonnie.
Basically on the same agenda that, uh, Darlene was in, with adding to the fact that you're talking fifty-nine hundred utility bills that go out because that's where you're going to determine your four dollars. So on your utility bill. How many apartments are out there? Are we considering all the citizens in the village Chatham? Or just that pocketbook that needs to be filled up and apparently it's going to be filled up. Why, because for figures are right, two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars. And you guys are going to pay this company, which was not the lowest bid, and by the way, we do use Lake Area, the village Chatham. It's on the warrant where you're paying Lake Area, which was the lowest bidder. And we're not using them. You guys have all been on Facebook. I know that. The majority of this town voted for Lake Area. And you guys went with waste management. Hmm, okay. I hope there's a good reason why we went with waste management instead of the lowest bid because in history, there was firehouse bill. They didn't go with the lowest bid because they wanted union, even though that company said we'll pay union wages. They didn't get it. You know, they were the lowest bidder. That company sued and got hundreds of thousands of dollars and didn't have to hammer one nail. So let's hope you guys choosing waste management instead of lake services are making the right choice for the right reason. Because Lake Area apparently has done a hell of a job for your citizens. And you guys chose the company that is seven thousand dollars more. Why? Not sure. I hope they all get answers tonight before you guys all go, yep, 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 yep. It's not fair. You guys are doing a lot of things behind closed doors that aren't right because I'm with Darlene. I was at meetings that you guys talked about reducing the green fee and all of a sudden it's going to four dollars. And you're going to make tenants of apartment buildings that I can guarantee are not great and they're crap for putting their limbs out, pay that same four dollars. Now, will forty-eight dollars a year kill someone? I don't know. My eighty-three-year-old deaf mother's on a very fixed income and that forty-eight dollars a year will pay for her internet that she needs to sign to her friends on that T V. So you guys are making a lot of choices and forgetting that the citizens should have a voice in this. So what is wrong with you guys? I mean, even the new people, I'm sorry, you come in, wet feet, ready to rock and roll for the citizens and all of a sudden your feet are put in concrete and you're stuck there not doing what you know is right for the citizens. That aggravates the crap out of me, you guys, because the citizen should not be paying four dollars per utility bill if they're not going out there. I do not use the service. I'll give you my forty-eight dollars a year. Retirement isn't that great as far as the income, you guys, but I'll give you my forty-eight dollars. But we have a lot of senior citizens. So when you do this to people that are R L M and in incomes, why don't you just tell them to move? Right out the door because guess what? None of you guys are going to be happy with that four dollars a month. I can guarantee you within two years you're going to come back because you're going to have two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to squabble. Where is it going? Two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars extra per year. You guys are going to start forking out some management. Seriously. Did you forgot who you work for?
Thank you, Ms. Billy.
That is the, uh, YouTube line?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any additional public comments? Hearing none, can I have a motion to put the consent agenda on the table?
Make that motion.
Trustee Mal has made a motion of a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Detmers. Any questions regarding the minutes or the warrants? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Scherchel.
Yes.
Uh, item one under old business, an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation of use of potable water supply wells or any other method. Do you have a motion to bring this to the table?
Make that motion.
Trustee Mal has made a motion of a second.
I'll second. Seconded by trustee Detmers.
Jeff, you get the background here.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. So this came up a few months ago. Originally, it was proposed to enact an ordinance prohibiting the entire village from utilizing a potable water supply well. Uh, we went back. There were some questions at the time. I handed out some information, the responses from the engineers on the project. Also, in working with, uh, Pat, uh, we inquired to see whether or not we could just do a more limited scope so it's not applying to the entire village. So the ordinance before you is revised and it does clarify it's just for a specific area. There's a map attached to that ordinance showing the area as well as, as kind of a general description in terms of streets. Uh, some of the questions, um, that the, uh, board had before involved, uh, again, kind of specifying the area of contamination, which has been explained by the engineer. The consequence if the village board does not approve the ordinance, uh, which essentially will require them to go out and try and get agreements with each property owner. They say is, is near impossible, uh, which would, uh, uh, not allow for basically the remediation of this property. And, um, also wanted to know what the plans for the property are. Did not get a definitive answer to that, other than it was the engineer's understanding wants to continue operating it as its current, as its current use. Uh, if the board feels comfortable with this, you can certainly go ahead and approve it tonight. Um, I did tell them that we were bringing this really for more of kind of a first consideration. Uh, but, and if there were questions, it might get pushed to the next meeting, uh, but wanted to bring you this update and this, uh, additional information that we now have.
Do I have any questions for Jeff?
So this is going to prevent any well digging within this specific area?
That is correct. Any new well digging.
What if you have one already?
If you have one already, it is not prohibited.
So, but if the concern is a health hazard, how does this, wouldn't that already dug well be contaminated potentially?
Right. So I mean, that's a, aside from this ordinance just would prohibit new, um, new wells being dug. It'd be an entirely different issue if you already have one that, you know, they'd need to work with the state on and need to be aware of that potential issue. And I'm typically, you can't, you know, there's not a lot of potable wells that are dug. You know, you're, you're required to hook up to the village's water supply. Typically not an issue, but, um, if somebody didn't have one, then especially in this area, they would need to be aware of it. And this is, this is kind of standard language that's required by the state as they get these, uh, uh, approvals so that they can um, not have to actually go in and fully remediate the property and the area.
Any questions? You guys comfortable with the vote?
I am.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Scherchel.
Yes.
Item one under new business, an ordinance amending the village code regarding the green program, collection of yard waste and branch and limb, limb pickups, no limbs. Do you have a motion to bring this to the table?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Detmers made a motion of a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Mann. Uh, the changes are what we discussed in the committee meeting two weeks ago. To put the, put the language into our code appropriately that reflects what the village uses. The green program to handle the leaf bags, the limb pickups, the annual large item cleanups, uh, street cleaning operations, uh, all those matters that roll into that. Uh, as discussed at that meeting, based on the results of the R F P, we would come back with the recommended price to cover those costs throughout the entire year of all those items. That price has been recommended at four dollars. Uh, similar to where we kind of anticipated the night we did the special meeting regarding this program on whether we were going to keep it or reduce the fee and eliminate portions of it, so. Any questions regarding this?
I, I do. What, um, what is, um, I mean, I know we don't have crystal balls in our minds, but what is the extra fifty thousand for?
Sorry, what?
The extra fifty thousand that four dollars will generate.
So we're going to have, in, in this program, the, the anticipated collections are set to cover.
I'm not going to take it here.
That's a old, that's a old cost conversion. Based on the bids that we received, relief pickups, branch pickups, estimated cost of the large item pickups, the dumpster days at the park, the operation of streets, street sweeper, and the costs associated with the village, the recommendation is to get to four dollars to do that and set that at a spot where that fund doesn't have to be changed constantly.
So at fifty-nine hundred residents, four dollars per twelve months, two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars of revenue is what we're talking about. Correct. The bids that are before us are for the cheapest one year, let's say one forty-eight, five hundred for the limbs, forty K for the yard waste pickup. That's a total of roughly a hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. So that means we've got ninety thousand dollars left. We have the dumpster day at the park, which is seventeen thousand last time we bid it, if I recall correctly, we put in our R F P out for that. So now you're down to seventy thousand. The seventy thousand is for a street sweeper and to operate the village dump.
Correct.
And that's a fee you can throw onto the citizens.
So. Any, any other questions from the board regarding this or discussion?
So this ordinance, it's, it looks like it already sets the four-dollar fee. Is, am I wrong?
That's correct. It, it's in here to set it. Because this is, this is everything. So it amends the old language, clarifies the fact that they're bid contracted services that are done, the terms under which those are going to be operated under.
I, I'd like to quickly just reiterate the, the, there was some talk about a one-dollar green fee. What, what was, if you go back and watch and, and go back and revisit, we were discussing multiple ideas that could possibly happen. We could do branches every day of the week, every, every week of the month, once a year, we could do leaves, et cetera. We talked about all different scenarios. We did it publicly. I believe, Ryan, you, one of your suggestions was, no, I really like the dumpster day. And, you know, we can get rid of leaves, we can get rid of limbs, but I really want dumpster days. And if we did dumpster days, then we can just get away with like a dollar a month. So there were many numbers shared in different scenarios. Then we, as a group, needed to speak more. We, we needed more conversation. And that led to a special, the special meeting for the board to discuss the green program in particular. In attendance to that meeting were thirty-five residents, like a, a lot of residents showed up to that meeting. And I believe it was Paul, you said, how many of you guys are in favor of continuing the leaf and limb program? I, I don't remember a person that didn't raise their hand. Everybody seemed to agree. Now, obviously, they agree with some idea in their mind that it's not going to be eight hundred dollars a month to do it. They had some presumption that it would be a reasonable cost. And I think we even said, hey, this may mean that it may go up a couple dollars here and there. Would you all agree? Nobody stood up and yelled and screamed. I did receive an email that the citizen said, hey, you know, I think that people should just mulch their leaves and um, maybe that citizen couldn't make that meeting. I'm, I'm not sure, but, but we, we've listened to the people. And the, it sounded as though the consensus was to keep the program up and running. This program, now then, if we're going to keep it up and running, we have the option to do it internally or to do it externally. The R F P was to understand what the cost would be if we said, hey, Joe or Tim or Suzie, what would you charge to do the leaves? What would you charge to do the limbs? And those results of that R F P are what we're discussing tonight. So if, if we were to elect to take these two options, then they could be covered by a four-dollar fee, which isn't forty-eight new dollars coming out of the bill, but rather twenty-four new dollars coming out of the bill per year. And I understand that twenty-four dollars is money and I'm not negating that fact, but it is currently set at two dollars and we're proposing to move it to four.
One thing for the seniors, I was just wondering, is there a way to adjust a fee for somebody who on the utility bill?
What, we have a current, there's electric, there's an electric rate, right? It's the only senior adjustment that we have. So that's.
That would.
That's where that adjustment's been.
And just to remind everybody, the funds that are generated through the green program are to be spent on green-related activities. They're not buying basketball hoops or frisbees.
The money is held in a.
Special account.
The one thing that, that I heard loud and clear was they didn't want to cancel the program. So knowing that what the amount of money that we were spending on the program was going to run that into a deficit of a sizable amount, that program was going to run in a deficit at a sizable amount, we were going to have to increase that fee in order to keep it. My initial proposal was that we do away with the leaves and the branches, but we heard very loudly from the citizens that they did not want us to cancel that program. So we have to recoup those, those fees from someplace to, to fund this, to fund this service. And this is going to end up being a cheaper way to do it rather than saying to the citizens, go find your own way to deal with it. Because one bag from whoever you choose as your provider will cost you two dollars and fifty cents. That's for one bag. So you're getting, for the cost of essentially two leaf bags, you're getting leaf bag pickup four times a year and monthly branch pickup at your home. That's what you're getting for that four dollars. Plus then the dumpster days at the, at the village and the open use of the burn pit. Under supervision, because you're not just allowed to dump anything you want to, but branches are allowed by citizens to be taken to the village burn pit. Um, out at the electric shop out on the south edge of town. And you're free to do that during village business hours. Well, after, there's a permit process. I did, we do, we did. We did or do have to, I don't think we have done this yet, revisit that permitting process, but I think we were kind of looking at that, but we've still got to revisit that a little.
There is no charge for residents.
Correct. There's.
But we still ask them to stop by and allow the permit.
Yeah, I think we're going to clarify some of the wording on that permit process, but.
Yeah, and that's fine. That's how administrative work.
Yeah. There's no charge for that.
One other comment that I have, not related to the rate, but just it does reference, and this is for the board to discuss, it's not my decision. But this ordinance references households and residences often. And there are some utility payers in the village who would be contributing to this green fee that don't, that don't fall into that category. For instance, uh, a reception center or a bicycle shop. If they're paying into the service, should they be allowed to drop off leaf bags and drop off limbs at the dump and have their limbs picked up?
Well, and to that point, trustee Detmers, a scenario I've thought about, because I know we talked about that the last meeting. So if, if someone is a contractor according to this definition and there's a, a single elderly person at home that's had someone doing this for a while and they've hired this person and, and I don't know if they, can that person use the burn pile currently?
If you're hired, the way it's written is if you're hired as a contractor.
Currently? Currently.
You have to pay a fee.
You have to pay a fee. So that, so, okay, so this person can, can use it and pay a fee and they're doing that. Now, if we change that, either if that person doesn't have their own pile, I guess they're just going to have to find somewhere else in Springfield or somewhere else to take that.
You mean a contractor?
The contractor will. Or this homeowner will have to find someone else or their rates will be raised in addition to because that's going to be an added expense for whoever's.
They're paying a fee regardless. If you have a commercial operator, come in and do it. If you have your neighbor come over and pick up your leaves, they put them on the fire and they get picked up.
Then it's not a contractor.
Right. Where the contractors come in and where you see them is, I've got a forty-foot, hundred-year-old tree in my yard and I want to cut it down.
Right.
That's the commercial operation that you see. And, you know, they have the ability to get rid of these.
What if someone's coming to mow and they're throwing the branches at the front for, you know, it's a little old lady that, you know, can't.
They're throwing the branches at the front.
Yeah, that's different.
You're not finding forty-year-old trees.
What we're trying to protect against. Yeah, well, I think what we're, the intent is to try to protect against Dewey, the tree guy that goes around Chatham and cuts trees down very cheaply. Is that you were to hire me and I go to your house and cut your tree down and I just leave it laying in the yard or I put it by the street. Now, that is an option. My neighbor had it done and he, my neighbor then hauled the wood away himself.
Right.
But, but what we're trying to prevent is for this tree service to come in and just drop the tree
Right.
and then not have any expense in removing the tree. But then the village comes in and uses its staff and its personnel to remove the tree.
Right.
So I think the way that it's written is saying, hey, look, if you are, if you operate in the tree cutting down business, then we're asking that you take the trees away that you dropped.
Correct. Your, your question, trustee Detmers, is?
My question is to clarify, this references households often. Should we potentially, um, include businesses that are also utility companies, assuming they're not tree contracting? Like if I had a tree contracting business, I shouldn't just haul it all in my backyard and expect the village to take it away? So if I was a bicycle shop, for instance, and I had a cute little tree in my front, should we allow them to seek, reap the benefits of this program?
So in, unfortunately, I wasn't here at the last meeting, um, for the discussions. But the overwhelming thing that is, I've been, people have approached me about is a lot of them didn't know we had the bran, the leaf and branch pickup and a lot of them just paid their waste haulers to do it. Um, and didn't know why we were involved in it. And so then I started looking and if you cut it down to a dollar and you could still do the big pickup at the, um, but I don't know that I'm even for doing a leaf and branch. Uh, you know, the, I, I'm for the village just staying out of it. But that's just me.
If we were to change the terminology Dewey to a, uh, customer of the, excuse me, customer of the village.
Utility customer.
Utility customer.
The, the R F Ps that were issued said residential.
They did, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how many, I don't know the number of how many utility customers are not residences.
We, I think we put six, we put six thousand in the R F P. That way we could be safe. So.
You're probably significantly overcomplicating your problem. Unless you would like to propose something, but the caveat being there, that.
Yep, I'm, I just asked a question of the board and if they, if they like it, they can say something.
Further discussions or?
I, but, I mean, I'll back up his point, though, to say that if we're charging them, do they have access to the service? Um, because I think they should be charged whether or not it's a service he utilized. To many people's point who came to that special meeting, regardless of it's utilized, everyone benefits because it, it's a part of making a, a community beautiful. It's a part of cleaning up. It's, um, and it prevents burning. So it all, all that goes together. So it's a mutually benefit, uh, for everyone. So to that point, would they also deserve to have access to it?
It should say utility customers.
It says residential utility customers.
It should be all utility customers. It should be all utility customers.
That's my question. Should it say all utility customers?
Well, two parts, because you're asking about the pickup. The charge 5347 references residential holding. Yeah.
Current green program takes in all RFPs.
Utility customers.
It does.
Assuming 6,000. To pick up residential spots, so.
Right.
Here's, here's what I think we're overcomplicating. To the extent that there, the ones that do clean it up generally are hiring people.
Right.
The access, the access to the, to the dump is always available to anybody that's the residential color or customer. That access will always be there to the dumpster. I, I think you're not going to have an issue there. But should it come up, we have abilities to renegotiate requests or, you know, change ordinance in effect. But I think we're probably overcomplicating a factor there that won't come into play. The, the one I, I do need a motion to amend the service charge section of this to say each utility customer, rather than each residential utility customer.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second by trustee Churchill. So further discussion there? You guys aren't clear with what that was striking a word? To make sure that this stays on each utility bill. In 5347.
So to clarify today, if I opened a Gatorade shop, I would have to pay, because I'm a utility customer, I'd have to pay into the green program.
That's correct. And that's, that's under.
And you're looking to keep it that way.
Correct. Under the similar argument on why you pick up leaf bags throughout the town anyway is, you know, for the people that are generating 80 bags worth of stuff, it's to everybody's benefit to have them gone rather than blowing up most of the town, so. Good. On the amendment, Madam Clerk, can I have a vote?
Trustee Mann.
On the amendment, yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes, on the amendment.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
Further discussion on the ordinance as amended?
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion to table this until our meeting where we approve the RFP and pass it as a package. So we don't end up in a situation, so we have a situation where our RFPs match what we're charging for. Because right now, we're passing the, or changes to the green fees, but we haven't agreed fully on the RFP just yet. So I feel like we've got the horse a little bit in front of the cart before we, you know, before we do this. You know, we can pass it as a package as soon as we have a final agreement.
I have four on your agenda tonight as half of this, right?
That's just the yard waste one?
That's the leaf bag.
Leaf bag. And that's not an urgent issue because it's past the leaf bag pickup.
Yeah.
There is, yeah, there is a need, as you mentioned, Trustee Gerger, to start to lighten these things up because some of this takes communication, some of it takes scheduling, some of it takes whoever the contractor is. The more lead time, the more effective that's going to be on any one of these things applying in time. It's, it's not new.
No, I just don't like, I, and this, you know, the board will take their vote and do what they, do what they choose. It's just I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse. I, I want us to fully understand the package as we're, we're moving forward. That's, that's my only point. And I understand we do have some, some, some time crunch there because we've got to figure out what we're doing with this pretty quickly.
Would make an emotion to move item one under new business down to item five under new business?
Well, that doesn't change it for me because the more urgent issue in terms of this whole program would be the branch pickup in terms of their impact on our street department. And that's not on the agenda tonight. So I don't see that that benefits changing around on the, the agenda tonight. You've made a.
There is a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Take a roll call?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
No.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
Item two is a resolution approving agreement of essential state's fireworks for the 2019 July 4 fireworks displayed. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Trustee.
Second.
Ma'as made a motion, trustee Charo. He's made a second discussion.
Order the same fireworks that we got last year.
Well, complimented display last year, so moving for the same.
Yeah, they were good.
Yeah.
On July 4th, like we always do.
Yep, at dusk.
At dusk-ish, when the guy decides it's dark enough. Let the pro on the field decide when he should see him. All right, Madam Clerk, you take the vote.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
Item three is an ordinance amending provisions of alcoholic beverages to modify and add a third R2G license within the village.
Make the motion.
Trustee Detmers made a motion, second.
Second.
Trustee Mao, by a hair, with the second. This will add one additional R2G license intended to go toward their adjacent place.
In adjacent place.
So they went there. Sushi Bar, where Creek Pizza, County Market, all this.
Sushi Bar.
Sushi Bar slash bar slash gaming.
That's cool. Can, can we buy, this is not related to the number of licenses, but can we buy alcohol before 8:00 AM? Is that a state law or a local ordinance on a Sunday?
That's our local.
Is that a local?
Because we used to, we changed it from 10:00 or noon.
From noon, it was.
It used to be noon, and we changed it. Is it 8:00? Is that in there?
So that's local.
Or the fisher, or the people going to the lake could stop at the grocery store, buy alcohol and take it with them.
Then shouldn't it be like 4:30 AM?
At that point in time, you need to get it the night before. Plan ahead.
Trustee Churchill is distracting from.
Back to, back to the matter at hand.
Well, it's been asked to me of several residents, though they, they've gone to County Market before golf outing or fishing or something else. And they're like, I couldn't buy, you know, they weren't, you know, they're, they're just trying, they were wondering why.
We could still lower it, too, if we wanted.
So anyway.
Do the motion that's actually on the table. Any further discussion? Any none, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
They have a motion to move item four to hold business for next meeting.
Make that motion.
Wait, it's the leaf bag collection. If you don't want to do any of it, I'm assuming you want to move that one as well. A and A, or do we want to take this vote?
I'd like to talk about it, but I don't think we can talk about it under the committee of the whole.
We can talk about it, we can only talk about it here.
It's on the motion to bring this to the table. This, item four is a resolution approving.
Make that motion.
Waste management for residential yard waste and leaf collection service. Trustee Detmers made a motion, and second.
Second.
Second by trustee Charo. Discussion.
Hyped up on sweet tea. You guys want to let me go first?
Might as well, you're rolling.
Go get them.
All right, so here's trustee Detmers's opinion. Unfortunately, I have leaf and limb both in mind, but because of this, I'll talk strictly about leaf. When we discussed this last, we had the preference of a three-year commitment. That was what we said. That was our consensus in leaving that meeting, was that, yeah, we'd like a three-year deal. My reason for liking a three-year deal, A, I'm in an industry that the longer term, the cheaper your rate. But in this particular case, based on these findings, you see no reduction in cost in a longer term.
Right.
In fact, with respect to, with respect to leaves, in both cases, your cost per year increase if you accept a three-year than if you were to just accept the first year. So my reasoning for liking a three-year is nullified because, again, we're not receiving a cheaper rate. And in particular, the agreements that's been drafted does not hold the vendor financially liable if they don't satisfy the terms of the agreement. So I could be a leaf guy. I could come in with the cheapest bid. I could take the leaves from January, sorry, July, August and September, which is none. I could take that $30,000 or whatever the amount ends up being. And then when it starts to get hard in like October, November, I'm like, oh, this is too tough. My truck doesn't run fast enough, whatever. And I could go out and bail. If, if they bail, we have no recourse to get our money back or to have them satisfy the remaining nine months of the term. So again, I like the three-year because it locked in the rate, potentially offering a discount. And I like the fact that they couldn't just weasel out of it 11 months in. Based on how this works, the three-year benefit is eliminated for me. They can leave whenever they want, and we can leave whenever we want, again, assuming the other is in violation of the terms of the contract. And we're not getting a discount. So I would like to publicly revise my thought in that I'm not stuck on three years. It could be one or three years, whatever you guys.
My, my issue with looking at it and just from working with the state and seeing a lot of bids, it looks as though Lake Area was the most honest one because I don't think anybody truly, any vendor truly knows what the impact will be to their business of who's going to utilize this program. And so they bid what they bid, knowing that it may jump the second year. And if it jumps for, you know, the, the vendor that bids three years, then we could see that financial issue. Well, and you saw that in the paper in the SJR. That happened in another city, you know, where residents were complaining because their stuff wasn't being picked up. To both of your points and, and looking at this, you know, I think with this being new and ours hesitation and reservations, I would like to propose a one-year cheapest bid on both. And it allows us to see how it goes, make sure that the, the service is there for our residents, and we can reevaluate. If they come back with, if, you know, we, we bid it out next year and they come back very high, we can go back and ask for the numbers on, we take it back. We do it ourselves again and look at that because it's obviously a, a service important to our residents. And we look at that on what's it take to get the equipment we need and, and evaluate that with the staff.
I'll, I'll ask for, I'll ask for a commitment one way or another. Two weeks ago, we left a meeting where everybody said, prepare an ordinance and a contract for three years to do this because we like the, you know.
I agree.
Known factor for each of these three years. There it sits. Please tell us which way you would like to go and come to an agreement so that we can be done and can get this done. The recommendation on leaves is there. I understand you're going to end up tabling this at no point, you know, anyway, because you moved the first part of this off anyway. But you've got to give a clear direction because we walked away from a meeting two weeks ago with that direction being pre-prepared for passage and ordinance for a three-year contract on this. And there it sits, so.
I apologize for the confusion that I've caused in thinking that a three-year term was the better idea. Again, I'm used to an industry in which it typically is. I've thought about this a lot since, and, and I think that we should consider one year. Now, what could happen in one year, to be perfectly clear, is that they could triple, quadruple their rate because they realized they made a mistake and, oh, God, it's way more work than we thought. And, and perhaps locking in a three-year term may have been better. But in that case, again, the three-year person that bids $100,000 or whatever it is can just stop doing it because they broke their leg.
See, that's the point. Can we just step back in?
The payment, the payment terms are always after service delivery. So on the leaf ones, the payment term, payments is two installments. And the first is in January after you've ran.
I understand.
The fall thing.
And the second one's July.
After the performance has been done. So in each case, it's performance and payment. It's not that somebody's getting paid upfront and then never doing the work. It's performance and payment, so.
For, for leaves, yes, you're, you're completely right. And I don't mean to be argumentative, but yes, you're correct in that it's January 1st and June 1st, I believe. But my point is, is just there are no teeth in the contract that commit them to doing the job that they've signed up for.
Just, just a minute, sir. My concern, too, is that I've never heard a complaint from a residence about this service who've, who've utilized it. My concern going forward is we commit to a three-year contract, and they do the bare minimum, don't breach the contract, but it's, they're not happy with it. We're stuck with it three years. And I'm sensitive to us sticking another board with something that the residents aren't happy with. And that's why I would, that's one reason why I would like a one-year. It allows us all to evaluate it. It's.
So then I guess my, one question I have is why did we leave two weeks ago saying each one of us?
I've explained my
We want, you did explain you, but I'm saying us as a board.
Well, in the, in the past, I've asked also for a one-year and the discussion on the value, but that's not there.
And I wasn't here, or I would have.
I guess my other issue is, you know, we asked for a one-year bid and a three-year bid. The one company only gave us a one-year bid. So to my point, they didn't give us a three-year bid, so should they even be considered?
Not if it's a three-year, but if it's a one-year.
Well, we asked for one and three.
Right.
You have to read the RFP.
They refused to.
You have to read the RFP to see if they had to submit both. Sometimes it's an option.
They may have said and/or.
Well, they refused to issue a three-year price, though. That's what I'm getting at.
It's right there. They've asked that question. Yeah.
Yeah, the RFP does say they have to provide a one-year and a separate proposal for three years.
Thank you.
It says they have to.
It says the contractor should provide the yard waste collection services, including a proposal for one year and a separate proposal for three years.
So that should be thrown out.
On termination default, all those things, regardless of length of any contract, all those things exist. And there's provisions in contracts on, you know, default, not living up to the terms of the RFP, walking away. Everybody has their provisions for either side defaulting on any part of the agreement. So I go similar to the conversation earlier. I think we're overcomplicating the contracts that are executed on a routine type basis.
So Jeff, if the consensus were for the board, not that I'm there, but to do it one year, are you saying they're disqualified because they didn't do the three?
I think that's certainly something that we even need to look at to see if their bid was responsive. And when you start to look at those issues, you ask yourself, did it give the other bidders an unfair advantage? If one bidder did not, you know, bid the three years with a, you know, you know, potentially advantaged by not submitting that bid.
And in this case, it's up to further suits if we accepted one or the other.
Well, you're, I don't know that would open you up to a suit if you went with Waste Management because they clearly didn't provide both bids. You also, this is not purely a price analysis. You're looking at, you know, the best overall, you know, service that's going to be provided and the bids do provide for the board to make a determination as to what you deem in the best interest of the village. So, you know, my opinion would be that the Waste Management contract or the proposal, you know, that was a complete bid. If you decided to go with a one-year or a three-year there, you know, that would be acceptable. I think that we would need to, if you want to go a different direction, you know, you can always reject all bids. Or if you want to, you know, go with another bidder, then we need to take a look at that and see, you know, what the, what those issues might involve.
Thank you. So do we have a motion to do anything or a consensus?
You've got one motion on the table.
And the motion is?
Apparently the motion is on passing this ordinance.
Okay.
However, I anticipated because we didn't pass first, the next thing we
We want to make a motion to table.
We'll make a motion to table it.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Why'd you, why'd you table this one? And just because we did table?
Just because we tabled it. There's no point to approve this.
Item five is a, item five is a resolution confirming appointments to the ADA Transition Plan Committee. An appointment of a new chairman. Do we have a motion?
Make that motion. All second.
Trustee Mao, second by trustee Detmers. Do we have any discussion regarding this resolution?
Thank you.
This will, yeah, this solidifies, solidifies trustee Mao as the, one of the members in the trustee position. Terry Fountain is a citizen, and Ryan Mann as the chairman. Thank you guys for stepping volunteer to finish that project.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we take the roll.
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Yes.
Schedule meetings ADA Transition Plan Committee meets 6:00 PM, June 18th. Planning Commission, 6:00 PM, June 20th. Village Board meets 6:00 PM, June 25th. Plug Properties and Recreation, July 8th at 6:00. Village Board, 6:00 PM, July 9th, followed by the committee hole, 6:15 or later. Utility Oversight Subcommittee, August 12th at 6:00. And the Fire and Police Commission meeting, August 21st, 5:30. Any additional comments regarding village business at this time?
The video hasn't been on the whole time Mr. Pat's been asked twice to put it on as people are wanting to know why the video wasn't on. Is there a problem tonight?
Doesn't appear. Everything seems to be working here. Says it's broadcasting, so. Maybe it's not doing it live. Maybe it'll do it after we're complete.
That happened before.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Can I make your comment?
Yes.
Well, one thing I think, I don't know what industry you're in, Mr. Detmers. But in one thing, in ours with a three-year contract, it isn't a subscription. All our equipment gets more expensive. All our maintenance gets more expensive. All our fuel gets more expensive. We just had a 19 cent fuel increase. I don't know why you think it would get cheaper as the years go by. So it's only going to get more and more expensive. Labor's going on.
So this contract blocks it in the price.
And you have a performance bond in there. I know I spoke to my interns that guaranteed that you guys were either getting your work or your money. So I don't know why there's any conflict. And like I said, I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
Sure, no, I appreciate it.
But I mean, our industry will get cheaper. I know what he's, I know what he does. His industry is getting cheaper. His guys are getting cheaper.
It sits up there. Like he said, 19 cents. Well, they say in a year, gas tax is going up 38 cents. That's the, that's the way.
I, again, I, I under-
So we have to be very careful when we bid a three-year contract. That's why I put in there 5% increase. And that was, that was cheap because I know myself going in that it's expensive. I mean, everything's expensive.
Yeah, in my
It's cheaper every year.
No.
It's up to our three dollars.
So your contract in this, in this category is probably real safe for you guys and us. I'm just being honest. Because nobody likes a long contract on something that is, when you, when you grab a hold of it and you're like, wow, you know, I took a beating on that. Now I'm going to do two more of these, you know, so.
Sure, yeah, my, again, my comment, my comment wasn't directed at any respondent to the RFP. Like, for instance, I'm in telecommunications. And if I installed a circuit between my house and your house so that we could send each other private messages, there's fixed costs to install that circuit, which obviously is included in the installation. But the longer I sign up to commit to you for $50 or to commit to Pat for $50 for that circuit, the more assured that that business is going to be there. And then they make discounts. So that's, again, it's not the same industry. I'm just telling you that mentally, I was in a different mind and think, oh, you know, three-year, maybe we could get a better rate of, whatever. Again, I mistakenly assumed that. And then with respect to the teeth of the agreement, I'm sorry I didn't see your, your performance assurance bond. I only had what, what was available to me. But again, I'm, not that this is a debate, but I was just unsure if, you know, you decided that you really hate leaves or limbs or whatever, you hate Chatham, and you just decide to stop doing it. What, what would ultimately happen? And my understanding after having read the agreement was that you would then be in violation because you didn't do the job. And we could say, oh, shame on you. You're fired. And then here we are back again looking for another vendor.
You're doing the work and then you're getting paid. You're not getting paid because this is, you know, this is being rep. I'm not getting paid first when you get delivered.
Sure. No, I, I understand. Yeah, and I know that. Sure. I know the limbs were paid monthly and the leaves were paid annually. I understand that. But again, after you receive your first payment, like, again, it's, you work from January to June, let's say, and then on June 30th, you're like, oh, I don't like this anymore. Technically, you could walk away. That's all I'm saying.
Not to belabor this point, but that can happen in any agreement, regardless of what it is, in any single agreement.
Again, that's why I was wrong. And I admit that I was wrong. I'm sorry.
Well, after further discussion, I think, here in the committee. So. Any additional public comment at this point?
So was there a performance bond required to fit the limb pickup in the contract or not?
I don't, I don't believe there was a performance bond in the
It listed it in the insurance requirement.
Oh, then there was. Yeah, then I apologize.
And then on second page of the index, it says mine's a performance bond. It says that, but it doesn't say the 10% or usually there's a bid bond first for 5%, you know, performance bond 10%, but it didn't list that. It did say the performance bond in there. And then if somebody didn't perform the job, you could go back on the performance bond and collect the money from that.
It'll pay.
To pay somebody to finish the job.
That's what I was thinking, something like that.
We're going to be on, on the flip side. Again, not to belabor this, we'd be on the flip side where nobody gets paid until the work was done.
Right.
So, okay.
Didn't it have the insurance requirement or did it have insurance before you bid it or not? No, you had to have your certificates turned in before you start working. So you could bid without insurance? And then go get the insurance and you got the job. Usually it's not done that way, but yeah, we start.
Okay. Motion adjourned the board meeting.
Make that motion.
Trustee Gerger, second by trustee Mao. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Chairman Gerger, your meeting.
Call to order. Roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Here.
Trustee Gerger.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Trustee.
Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
Trustee Churchill.
Present.
Now we're in the committee of the whole.
Public comments on agenda topics? On agenda topics, I've got Sean Nix.
You got to make a decision on the RFP or the limb stop.
They both got tabled.
That, for that, it was a previous meeting.
There'll be a discussion about the limbs.
We'll have a discussion here.
I'll hear in just a second.
About the limbs.
Well, I mean, you know, for myself, I will say something about it. I mean, as a bidder, I mean, we got two very close bids. I mean, I, it's unimaginable that somebody bid with $300 on each other within $3,000 on each other over, you know, $300,000 worth of money. You know, so it's a tough decision on you guys' part to come up with it. But I had an asterisk in mind. I was told that, you know, there might be some, you know, someone that wanted to lower their number. And I thought for the integrity of the bid, that's really, should be unacceptable. It is what it is. I think you guys got to make it. I don't think it was going to the lowest bidder necessarily anyway. I think it was going to, it was going to do the job best. You know, I'm a Chatham guy. Get my taxes in Chatham. Kids go to school in Chatham. I spend my money in Chatham. I would think that you guys want to spend your money in Chatham. I own multiple businesses. I'm a trucking company. I know what fuel is. I spend $8,000 a month in it. So I, I know what I'm doing here. I don't, he doesn't, definitely doesn't, he knows what he's doing. So. But I just want, you know, my same opportunity. If any numbers get changed, I think it's definitely unfair. There's no reason in the integrity of it to change the number. There's no reason for him to lower his. There's no reason for me to lower mine. You know, with the expenses that are coming.
And I, I don't think the numbers could be lowered, could they? So you're safe there.
Yeah.
So, but I was just told that, you know, there was a possibility of you being, you know, that as an option. I, I just don't think for the integrity of it, it should be.
Well, both gentlemen had question marks in their bids. One had the 5% that really never laid out what year two and year three was. And when I called Mike and he turned around and said, 5% for the second year, and then I'll do the third year as the same price as the second year. I put that down as the three-year bid. Sean's bid, he had a one-year bid, and then he also had a three-year bid. But then at the end, he had in there the caveat that if the wind got over 35 miles an hour, he either got a premium or to be able to dump at our dump. Or a nice storm. So both of those are parts that is very, very hard to turn around and try to determine who had a lowest bid. So that's why we had them both come tonight, and they can present their cases to you. And you guys can decide whether you want to go with a one-year bid, a three-year bid, or whatever.
Okay.
That might be the only change would be the years.
So, so your question mark was if you have higher winds?
My question mark was extreme weather. I was talking ice storms or severe weather. Either I got to use the dump or some excess dumping or to charge, to surcharge. You know, what is the surcharge? $2,500. Okay, every time you wait
Well, hang on, hang on. Just to keep this, if I may suggest, talk to the board.
Yeah.
Not to each other.
Oh, but this really shouldn't be happening.
I'm getting back to the Chatham Fire and Police Department. I don't care.
Well, we don't want that. That's what I'm suggesting.
So, but I mean, it doesn't matter. But I really think that it was only under extreme weather conditions. Severe, like I think I'd said, you know, on an average month, it takes me 10 truckloads of limbs to get out of there. And all of a sudden in January, you have an ice storm, and it takes 50 truckloads in February. There ought to be some sort of compensation. It was my, you know, point to it.
Sure.
So are you changing from the 35 miles an hour now to just ice storms?
You can't.
So you're staying 35 miles an hour still?
So, I mean, I, it's excessive, you know, excessive amount, you know.
Code, code red days.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Too soon.
Too soon.
Too soon.
I'm sorry.
And then, sir, what was, so you had a, an asterisk as well?
Okay, Mike Pierce, National Tree Care. I just want to say I've been in business in trees for 30 years. And I've done this. I've done cleanup. I worked for FEMA. Been in charge of FEMA for years. So one thing about it is, in regards to extra expense, I bid that on my bid. So there is no additional expense. The only additional expense I put was when we went to and three years. And I added basically tax and, you know, wage increase and stuff like that. But in regards to my bids, it's a straight bid. I know what I'm doing. I've seen what was done. I mean, I got the chippers, the grapples, dump trucks. I'm prepared for trees. That's all I do.
So, so your, your bid though now is 5% for the second year, and then the third year is the same as the second year?
No, it's, it's two and a half and two and a half. So basically it's five total, 5%.
Five total?
Yeah.
Can, Mr. Jurgens, can they adjust that?
Do we want to wait till we get to this on the agenda?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. We'll, we'll talk about that when we get to that on the agenda. Okay. Darlene?
What you're talking about, what I was talking about.
All right.
That's good. I appreciate it very much.
Bonnie?
I was just trying to figure out who was who.
I'm trying to make sure. I don't need more.
I was just trying to get it straight because our radio still isn't working. So when we go back and look at all our crap, who was in their point across in a very well and very good way to you guys. No, I'm good. You guys didn't listen to me first, so why was my problem?
I listened.
Then, we all listened.
Yeah.
And then Mike? Mike Perry or Pierce?
Mike Pierce.
Okay, so we've got Mr. Pierce. That's all I have.
We also in the audience tonight have Terry Brown, who bid a tree and branch pickup. He was the high bidder.
Okay.
And we also have a gentleman here from Waste Management. So.
All right. The gentleman from Waste Management, you had something to say earlier?
Well, I'm not at this point since it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
That should have been a discussion of that. But yeah, I was taking it back to the comments of not wanting to fill a three-year contract.
Okay.
And we'll discuss that in the next round.
Thank you. Have a motion to bring the consent agenda forward.
Make that motion.
Trustee Mao, second.
Second.
Trustee Charo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Or any discussion? I'm sorry. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Post. All right, ayes have it. Old business, none. New business, CMT engineering updates. No update this week.
I do have a question regarding that real quick. Pat, do we know anything about the floor beans or is it still?
No update.
No update. But we're hoping soon.
Well, we've been hoping soon for at least
For eight months, nine months.
Yeah, nine, eight, nine months, so.
Okay, RFP discussion for limb and branch.
All right, so to get back to your question, when you look at the proposal by National Tree Care, you've got the one-year contract price, $124,500. Then under a three-year contract price, you just have 5% increase. And I think that's where staff was confused as to exactly what that 5% meant. Don't want to provide the situation where you can go back and, you know,
Adjust.
Adjust and, you know, to somebody's benefit. And on the other bid, you have the situation with Nixmore where it says the prices are basically contingent on ice storms or severe weather winds in excess of 35 miles per hour allowed to dump at Village or $2,500 surcharge. I think that staff went back and tried to identify all the, you know, times that winds exceeded 35 miles per hour, which were several. Is that accurate?
It was numerous this season, yeah.
And again, you know, questions about is that a, you know, one-time surcharge or is that every single time that happens? And so staff had questions on both of these bids. And this is why specifically we recommended we put this on the committee of the whole for some more discussion. And quite honestly, because of, you know, when you get into some of that confusion with, with going to the three-year, our recommendation was maybe the board look at a one-year contract for these services. This is a little bit more of a unique service that you're going to be contracting for. A lot different than a leaf bag pickup, which is, you know, more of a routine service that, you know, waste haulers provide. This is somewhat unique. So maybe you do this for a year, you see how it goes, you do an evaluation, and then you can always renew or, you know, rebid it or however you want to handle it going forward on that situation. So that was the thinking of staff. But again, I wanted to put that out there for the board.
And that, one year, if we did one, if we considered it a one-year, would that high winds or extreme weather still be in place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and so in that situation, I think, you know, really you're looking more at the, you know, the National Tree Care just on its face is $300 cheaper without even taking into account the surcharge. And again, you don't have to go with the lowest price, but that, that certainly is a factor. And then, you know, when you look at the experience, you know, that's provided with National Tree Care, certainly if, if the board felt that that was the suitable proposal, that would certainly be, I think, within your rights.
I think at this point, as close as they are, it would suggest that you, since the two that are so close, take the opportunity to listen to how they plan to approach this job and tackle it. Because at that rate, service is going to be your biggest thing. And the, the biggest concern I have with doing this with anybody is does it get done? Does it get done on a timely basis? And does it get done repeatedly to a spot where, you know, we're not fielding the complaints or having to send our crews out just to fill in gaps or constantly, you know, going back to our contractors, trying to avoid those problems. So they're both here, you know, opportunity to listen and talk about their contract or their companies and understand what they're doing. So I would suggest you take that opportunity.
Well, following up our conversation before, and I know we talked a lot about the one-year and three-year, both last meeting and this meeting. But that's, I felt uncomfortable, as trustee Mann said, putting the cart before the horse, talking about the program. When, you know, when you're looking at this, so the numbers can change and charging a fee, we don't know how much we're going to pay. And so I, I just want to reiterate that point because I think it should be talked about together. So by the time we vote on this the next time, we have a full understanding of how all this is going to fit together.
Do, do any of the trustees have questions for the gentlemen that are here? Because this is the, like, you know, Mayor Kimsey said, this is the best opportunity you have to ask questions. And so with that point, I, there's so close a difference on the one-year. But the difference gets a lot wider on the three-year. But the difference isn't really there because there could be a surcharge on one.
I had drawn up the financial estimations and based on the way that I read the RFP responses and perhaps I misunderstood the National Tree Service asterisk, which, which read figures in, or can, can you tell me what that says exactly on the 5%?
You're talking about the Nix Moore or the National Tree?
I think it's National Tree.
Add 5% on the three-year.
It says. One-year contract price, 124,500, three-year contract price, 5% increase. I, I likely mistakenly read that as year two was 5% greater than year one and year three was 5% greater than year two. In other words, it, it increased each year by 5%. That's how I read that. And if that were the case, then on a three-year, they're still very, very close. So.
You keep saying 124,500.
That was their one-year bid.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that, that's true. There is.
True. That's correct. You're correct. It's 148,500. Sorry. I have it right here. It's 148,500 for year one, which was $300, only $300 cheaper than the second bid. But again, when evaluating year one and evaluating year three, I must have misunderstood the 5% increase.
I'm fine with a one-year contract. That way we can see how this all works and then revisit it again and maybe propose another, you know, three years next time. You know, it seems like this whole discussion is getting a little, branching out into some directions that maybe is a sign that we just need to do this one year and see how the one-year works. Because then you don't have the 5% and then you'll have a better idea of what your costs are going to be in that year and then.
Do we have an estimate of what the surcharges would have been this year?
The surcharges for what?
2,500 times every time it went over 35 miles an hour. With the ice storms or other high wind storms.
The last couple of months, it's like every other week.
It would, that would be hard to gauge.
Yeah.
Sure you could turn around and say, okay, every day that went over 3,500, we owe that. But.
That's just for this year.
Like you said, Sean, you might, it might knock a bunch of trees down the next time 35 comes through and it's enough.
Right.
Right.
But it's, but it's still something that was put in the bid that is going to fall back on somebody to be responsible on the side. The severity of the end, you just, like I said, excessive could be used on the dump. I mean, like I said, I, I plan to take it away. But if there was excess, like I said, if there was 10 truckloads, all of a sudden it's 50 truckloads, well, excessive, I could share the dump with some of that, not that surcharge.
And then you'll know more after one year though. We can revisit more knowledgeably.
So, like we, like what happened two weeks ago, is there a consensus moving forward of what you guys would like to see in ordinance for this look like?
Well, tonight I hope that you decide on a year and a contractor to work with it so that we won't have to go through this all over again.
Well, I can see trustee Charles' point and, you know, the three-year to me is a great idea. However, if we see after a year, year and a half, that it's not a good program, it's not working, we're locked into that three-year contract. Whereas if we did a year and it worked great, great. Let's do a three-year next year. Or if it doesn't work, we can revamp it, we can change it and make it into what we really want to make sure that, you know, it is what we want. And we could have a trial and error because, with that one year.
I've got a question. So, for example, if I get awarded this one-year contract and you guys are happy, you see everything is done correctly, will it continue on the second and the third?
This is, we're.
You're going to put it back out for another RFP?
That's, that's, would be up, that would be up to the board at the time. They could waive the bidding process and, and award an agreement. But it, it would probably be up to the board at that time to evaluate whether or not they need to decide they want to go back out for bids or if they're happy and they think the price is consistent.
Because the RFP, we didn't put in there like it's guaranteed one with three-year renewable.
No, it's, it was either a one-year agreement or a three-year.
So, so I look at it this way. I've done, you know, I've done a lot of contracts and personally, I, I think the, the three-year deal is probably the way we should go. Because a contract isn't necessarily, I, I, I hear it kind of being talked about as an adversarial thing. And the contract should be more of a partnership between whoever has awarded the contract and the, so the providing of the service and the recipient of that service, it should be a partnership. I think both of these contracts, they make sense. They're two different approaches to a similar situation. You've got a, a flat 5% increase and you've got a, not a flat increase, but there's a, a, yeah, an ability to, there's an understanding there that means that things happen and there's a way to adjust it when things happen.
Yep.
I don't think either way is unreasonable, but this, to me, this should be entering into a partnership. And if things start to go bad in a three-year deal, you still have the abilities to, to, to agree that things need to change. So, I don't know that a one-year deal, because then, then we're going to be, so then we're going to be, with a one-year deal, we're going to be right back at this in, in nine months, because that's about when we would need to start renegotiating the contracts and looking at this to get it passed by calendar year. And then, if we choose that we, if we like the agreement, then we have to bypass our own rules, which we can, we're, we are the board, we can bypass our own rules, or we lock in a long-term deal. So, I, I'm, I'm for the three-year agreement. Because it, it, it stops us from having to break our own rules, even though yes, we can.
The good thing about the three-year is that it comes with an understanding that prices are going to increase and it, stuff is going to happen and that's in the contract. I like that. And, you know, and there's a good faith initiative, you know, when you have a contract with somebody, you assume they're not going to break it, you know, and, and you assume they're going to do the best job possible. And I like the, the idea, just given the discussions, it seems like the one-year, you know, and maybe, I don't know.
Are you switching back to the three-year?
I don't know. No, I like, I came in here wanting the three-year.
So, do we, do we have a consent, we need at least four of us to want a three-year and then choose the same bidder?
I'm good with a three-year.
Okay. So, we have three for a three-year? For both or are we just limb? Well, just for, for, we're just talking about limb and branch right now. Are you good with the three-year? That's the first question.
I'm good with a three-year as long as everyone else, you know, can get on board with this. You know, but if it's something where we need to revisit it, then I'm fine with that too. But I mean, I, I don't think anybody's going to breach the contract.
We've got three that would do three-year. Do we have a fourth?
I personally would like a one-year. Do we?
I, I see one-year. There's no good, there's no clear-cut answer. That's, that's just it. Again, I, pessimistically, I like one-year. But if everybody, if everybody committed to it and did it and everybody was happy, then three-years, again, there's no good answer. So.
I'll make the point for you guys that in, in all these, any contract that we've done, there is a default, there is a termination provision. These things exist and they exist for both sides in the agreement. Should either party not be living up to the expectation of the agreement, it's either modified and corrected or there are default and termination provisions. So, the concern about, you know, are we going to be unhappy in a year with nothing to do isn't really a valid concern. Because we have the provisions of the RFP that all get incorporated into that. And what that says is, here's the schedule at which you have to pick up. You know, the pickup is ineligible at every residential location throughout town. If at any point in town, whichever contractor isn't doing those things, that's where the default and termination and the remedies that are in any contract come in. So, it's not unusual for those to be there. They exist in this contract like with any other service contract. And, you know, at any point in time, when you get to the spot that if, you know, company A has it and after three months, you've received so many complaints of this isn't getting picked up in my yard and nothing's happening, and, you know, and there's no response to any of our remedies that are in that to cause that service to be executed, that default is in the contract and you will have your out and we're going to move through that.
As a municipality, longer contracts are better as long as there are outs. So, like, people will want to compare this to the water or they'll want to, there's no outs there. As long as these have outs, it's always in the best interest for a municipality to go longer than shorter, because I would imagine that your costs are going to go up more than 5% a year. So, it, it's always in the best interest of a municipality to do that as long as there's outs. And like Mayor Kimsey said, there will be outs. So, are you advocating three-year as well? I'm not advocating either way. Very strong non-committee. Are you just going to wait and show us when the vote comes up? No. No, I, I'm, I'm on a different side of the, the aisle. I just think we should do limb and branch when there's a storm. So, I'm sorry, what? I just think we should do limb and branch when there's a storm. I don't think we should be paying to pick up people that just want to trim their trees or do that type of stuff. You know, I saw one on Gordon that we took away a whole tree. So, yeah, no, I, I'm on a different side of the fence, but I understand where others are and have no problem with it. So, we have three for three, two for one. Do any of the threes want to switch to one or do any of the ones want to switch to three?
It, it doesn't matter. I can go either way.
I'd like to be consistent. So, if we do a three-year on this, then I'm going to say we do a three-year on the other.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I mean, I, I personally would like to do the one-year because this is very new and I think we should see how it goes in a year. But if we're going to use that logic, let's use that logic consistently.
Understand. So, now that, if we, if the board's consensus is to go to a three, which bidder do they want to take?
Before I can say that, I would like to ask these gentlemen a few questions.
That would be great.
Number one, we'll, we'll start right here since he's closest. What's your, what's your, what's your plan? You know, how, what, what equipment are you going to use? You know, how are you going to manage this whole, you know, the entire community?
We're going to put it out in the newspaper. We're going to play it out on the route just as city, you know, with that. But we have one week to do it. I have three crews, three trucks, three custom-built trailers, 18-foot trailer with six-foot ball, covered carts, the one, you know, lights on the trucks and trailers. We're going to do the route just as it's planned. You know, my, my, my plan is Monday and Tuesday is going to be the whole west side of Route 4. Wednesday and Thursday is going to be the whole east side of Route 4. I, I have written down here that I'm willing to, you know, I was going to put in the advertisement with the map that shows the route that any disabled or physically unable person that can, can't get their limbs to their curb, I would put an email, a text or a phone number that we can set an appointment, so I want somebody to be at home before I went on the property, that I could help to assist to make sure that some piles on the side of our house or in the backyard, that I'll make, that I'll get the limbs to lie on it.
What, are you going to grind the limbs right there into the trucks or just pick them up and go?
Take them away.
Just take them away?
Okay.
I don't, I didn't, I didn't think the noise was necessary.
Yeah.
Especially if it's six in the morning, six in the evening.
And I made the offer to help any of the vendors put a map together. We'll turn around and make sure it gets put on our webpage, it gets, goes out on our alert system, it gets in all, all of the media outlets and stuff like that so that everyone knows what area they're in and what days to expect them to come through.
So, same two questions to you.
Yeah. Well, basically, we'll, we'll run three crews on the cleanup and a lot of times we'll have loaders, bobcats there because it's not just picking up sticks. Because I've seen that in FEMA where you get a bunch of guys trying to load a trailer that goes up 12 foot high and don't work. So, we, we come up with loaders and bobcats and we load out and we go street by street and we'll work from, we start from the west and we'll work our way through and it's basically five days. I ran the program, I've seen it run and we're a little faster because we got a little, our, our equipment's a little more equipped for trees. That's what we do. And when it comes in a big piles, we'll chip out a lot of piles. We'll chip it, whatever's more convenient and moving quicker. So, and along with that, we break and finish and go to final. Believe me, I deal with residents every day. I know what it takes to do a clean job. I'm there every day watching and overseeing everything. So.
Will you chip at onsite or away?
A lot of the stuff, if it's piled, the breeze piled too bad, we'll load out and then do it on, off, on our site. But it just depends. If they're stacked easy, we'll chip it and just move on to the next one. So, it, a lot of times it depends on how the loads are. I have seen by fire hydrants, I've seen a mess with the, what they're having to deal with now. And, you know, that's one of the things hopefully that we can overcome and by talking to residents and let them know how to stack and how to do it. So, and I, I will be helping. I'll be there every day.
Okay. Any other trustee questions? So, now do you have a consensus on who you'd like to see in this ordinance?
Hoga National.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce, how long have you been doing this?
Me?
Yes.
35 years.
Mr. Nix?
Three branches? I haven't done three branches. But I've done, let me tell you what I've done. From the time I got out of school, I worked on Noah Bridge. Three years as a senior operator. Got tired of traveling, got out of the car business. Served at the bottom, 15 years in the car business, so I was running the car business. I was the general manager. I cleaned up the mile at the state fair for numerous years, CRB cleaning. Every year I had the contractor clean up the Springfield Mile and other huge events and do it in two days, you know? People walked out, we picked up 80,000 beer cans and then a piece of popcorn and literally every peanut shell had to be out of it, from the infield to the whole grand stadiums. I've owned, I've owned a couple of businesses. I've been trucking companies. I never owned a semi or I never drove a semi, so I bought one, you know? Myself, I am a go-doer. You know, I get everything done I've ever done. I've accomplished everything I've ever done, you know? I'm, I'm not afraid of a little bit of work, you know? And I, and I have the backing and the money to buy a vehicle and I do backing and the money to do whatever I need to do. I've done, I've done it over and over.
Appreciate that. Thank you. So, trustee Mau, you have national?
I did, I did receive a notice from a resident that gave kudos to Mr. Nix. I did, I did receive a notice from a resident that gave kudos to Mr. Nix.
I did as well, on both.
I did well.
Just, sure, not that it means anything, just saying.
Trustee Sherrell? I'll just go this way. Or do you want to come this way and come back?
I'll let the people who've proposed the three-year go first, since trustee Detmers and I had the preference for the one.
Trustee Cheryl?
I like your experience, I like, you're from Chatham, I like both bids. I'm going to stay with the experience.
National? Trustee Detmers?
National's cheaper for three years or one year, and they have more experience, National.
Trustee Sherrell?
I'd agree. I think they'd both be great, but cheaper on both and more experienced.
So there is a consensus for National and three years.
So that's direction to have an ordinance prepared for the next meeting, to hire National for three years.
That's what it appears to be.
Pending two weeks and then you change your mind.
Then we change our mind.
I didn't want to say that, but.
I'll say it.
Yeah, again, I've had a great relationship with Chatham. All my boys went here, my daughter's here, you know, and I do the electric, I'm an archerist, so I do a lot of work for Chatham, and we have a good relationship, so.
Good. I, I'll just.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you for all three of you, Mr. Brown in the back as well. And I know, you know, it does take some work to put this together, so I thank you all, but somebody has to win, right?
Okay. Village manager update?
The only item we have tonight is to go over the budget with you, if you would.
This is a Cliff Notes version right now?
Just that little thing?
No, no, we're doing the heavy detail tonight, Matt. Uh-uh, I hope you brought your blankie. This is just a draft, it's not ready for release yet.
Twenty-twenty. It's weird. It's weird.
We have a PowerPoint presentation tonight on the fiscal year 2020 budget. So, the first slide, one of the things we're going to go over tonight. Fund structure, the budget process, budget goals, new items that are going to appear in the budget document, and just an overview of those. We have fund structure. Or you can outline of the villages of funds. We have budgets each funded individually. And we have a general fund, which is our governmental operations, which fund our parks, our police, our streets, cemeteries, administration. We have some small revenue funds, which is motorfield tax, I think it's a memorial fund. And we have the capital projects fund, which accounts for major projects. For example, the Park Street project that is still almost finished, which is going to be shown in this budget. Also a permanent fund, which is our cemetery catchable care fund, which accumulates what, say, our fees. Then we have two enterprise funds, which is our water and sewer fund and our electric fund, and finally, a, please mention, the bus fund. So, most of our focus is on our three major funds. And that's the general fund, the electric fund, and the water and sewer fund. Now, overview of the budget process. We started planning this back in February. We start with revenue, revenue and preliminary payroll estimates. And then we based our operating expenditures on the fiscal year 2019 budget. March 1st and March 15th. Preliminary results were reviewed and budget materials were assembled. And from March 18th to the end of May, village management team conducted several meetings to discuss the budget. And here we are now, we do have a draft preliminary budget document prepared. And we're going to have a recommended budget for the village board to pass at their next meeting on June 25th. There will be a public hearing prior to this meeting on the 25th. And there will be an announcement about public hearings and very interesting. As in past years, we've put together budget goals. These are the goals that have carried forward for the past two to three years in our budget. And we look at customer service, performance, economic development, and all of the applied. Like I said, we are putting together a large budget document. It's just in the draft stage at this point, but it will be available within the next couple of months. Some of the new items in the budget document. An estimated changes in fund balance and net position just shows an overall view of the operations of the village. Has a summary schedule of the positions that are budgeted in the village. Description of our debt service, of our debt obligations that are responsible for the upcoming years. And then there's some budget summaries that shows all the funds in sort of a graph presentation. And then we also added variant, is a glossary of common terms that are used throughout the document. So, right now, the pie chart before you is what makes up our budget. It's, the total amount is twenty-six million, six hundred fifty-three thousand and twenty-nine dollars. And that shows each fund, and you can see that our three main funds are the general fund, the electric fund, and the water and sewer fund. And that makes up about ninety-three percent of our spending. And what you'll notice about appropriation is different than our estimated revenue, is we're appropriating for things that are carrying forward from prior years. So our estimated expenditures are mutually always going to be lower, given our appropriation is. We've got projects that are carrying forward, we've got obligations that are carrying forward. So you're always, we're always going to mutually pass a budget. Your appropriation is going to exceed your estimated revenue. And this graph, I'm just trying to demonstrate that. The first two columns is the 2018 fiscal year actual numbers. You can see our revenues were more than our actual expenditures. The next column is the 2019 budgeted revenues and appropriation. You can see that expenditure column is higher. That's just showing that we were planning for capital projects that could happen, or accrued time payouts that could happen, and some expenditures that were going to be issued with possible debt issuance. And then you can see the third set, two columns, is the estimated actual 2019, where we think we're going to end up. That our revenues in that, in those two columns are more than our expenditures. And then the last two sets of columns is the fiscal year 2020 production, which is also showing our revenues and operating expenditures about even. And then what's making the expenditure column a little higher is just those carry-forward items, those things that we were planning to pay out with the funds on hand. It's those that happen. So now we're going to move into the three major ones. General fund is first. We're estimating revenue of five million, four hundred nine thousand, five hundred seventy-six. And the main revenue sources of the general fund are property taxes, sales taxes, legal taxes. And they represent sixty-six percent of what funds your police, your administration, your cemetery, your parks, and your street operations. The next slide shows a general fund expenditure by department and by category. And you can see that the largest expense in our general fund is personnel. And it is approximately seventy-six percent of expenditures that we spend out of that fund. As we were talking about before, the items that could possibly be paid out from reserves are the, we're going to be doing a transfer of the general fund for the 2017 general obligation bond into the capital projects fund. And this is to pay for the remaining amount due on a street infrastructure project, which is the Park Street.
Park Street.
We do have an estimated liability related to improved benefits that were approved before fiscal year 2020 that we could be responsible for paying out. And that amounts to three hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. There's also some carry-forward of the park development and football court conversion. Thirty thousand dollars is for park development, and the football conversion is forty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty. Part of that is from donations from community groups that were received in fiscal year 2019. And the other part was the amount that the village had committed to pay for the project. We're also carrying forward purchase of a police vehicle that was in fiscal year 2019 budget that was going to be paid for out of the police department's, one of their restricted funding accounts. And then, the police department has several restricted accounts that are very specific on what type of expenditures they can spend out of those. And they have about twenty-two thousand, five hundred that they plan to spend out of those.
I have a question on that, Sherry. So, the price of that police vehicle, is that the price of the vehicle itself, or is that the total price, lights, whatever else goes to that in that car?
The price of the whole vehicle. General fund cash balances. The village goes via the GFOA best practices and, which is to recommend that we have our unrestricted fund balance, which is a minimum of two to three months of budgetary operating expenditures. The village carries that a little further, and we extend that to our cash balances. So our goal is to have between two and three months on hand. Other communities have bigger objectives, and they might even want, you know, six months on hand. But since two to three is a more manageable number to attain, we've considered that a target at this point. And that target would put us between nine hundred fifty thousand dollars to about a million four. And we're at the end of April 30th, 2018, we're actually over that, so that's good. But.
But we also.
Took us a while to attain that.
Yeah, I mean, you can see we've been fiscally responsible on the amount of growth that we've had from 2015 up to 2019. We've, we now meet our three-month, at least, safety valve. So now we can start planning for, like say, for instance, the Walnut Street project. On that project, it's a SATS project, they would give us an eighty-twenty match on that. So as long as we could come up with twenty percent of what that project was, our engineers estimated it'd be a million and a half to be able to widen that out to three lanes, curb, gutters, sidewalks, everything, and match the regular transition through there. We have enough funds on hand to be able to do that when that project comes around now, so.
General fund budget highlights, there are just a few things. Our budget document, completion of the villages conference, and planning performance audit should be completed for fiscal year. Village plans to continue with annexations. We're going to try and update our service manuals as well, develop other service manuals that timing, staff timing allows, and implement new software application also, step and permits. In the Parks and Recreation Department, there is the purchase of two Super Z seventy-two-inch mowers. And that's, the combined cost for both of those is twenty-two thousand, five hundred. We already talked about the park development and football court conversion. And there's also about twenty-four thousand dollars to pay recreation programs.
So, Sherry, are those the smaller mowers then? Because I remember the bigger one mower, we paid thirty, forty thousand for just it.
This is, these are still big mowers. They cut a seventy-two-inch wide path. But they're not as big as that one that we call the bat wing.
Okay.
In the street department, there is the hiring of a digital street maintainer and departments to focus on patching of streets and repairing of sidewalks. Police department, they had, we mentioned this before, there's the carry-forward of the restricted cash purchases and the purchase of a police vehicle. There's also a second vehicle to be purchased out of the general fund. Two thousand twenty budget, three carrier holder vehicles in the fleet. And they also have a couple vehicles in the budgeted, in the police and public works utility tax fund, both purchased on capital leases. One is carrying forward from the fiscal year nineteen budget that didn't happen. And there is one that should, timing should allow existing obligations are paid off to create money for another lease. Then the last one is the evaluate, the need to fill existing vacancies based on performance audit results.
Is there any questions on the general fund before we move on to the next ones? Electric fund?
Electric fund. The electric fund estimated revenues is eleven million, sixty thousand, three hundred and seven. Most of that comes from the electric rate charges, ninety-three percent. There is some interfund projected revenue of the interfund loan between the water and sewer fund. The water and sewer fund is on the second, will be on the second year of their payback schedule to the electric fund, so eight, nine thousand, seven hundred and seven is included in there for estimated revenues for the next year.
I did have a question on the revenues. So, and again, I know we don't have crystal balls, but do we know, or have we heard of any potential rate increases from IMEA to come down the pike, or have we not heard of any?
We've not. Okay, good. They, they try to give us a notice, but they can't give us a notice longer than a year after.
Yeah. Typically, it's like January, February, we get guidance from it.
Yeah. But there was nothing there, there, sure.
Electric fund expenditures, total appropriations of $11,261,318. The majority gap, 64%, electric purchasers, followed by personnel cost at 15% and capital expenditures And as we've talked about the other funds, they have a couple items that would be paid on, with cash on hand if they would sell for, one is $152,000 in approved bonuses application. And there's also $9,810 of development being discussed and that came from developers in prior years that is going to be used as a action for the village's grant for three months on hand. But this is the, graphic the cash balances, unrestricted cash. Like the general fund, electric fund, that is, that is target.
And the thing that we have to look at this fund is just like the other fund where we have a long range project. The long range project that we should aim for, for the electric fund, is adding another transformer at the independent substation. It was originally designed to be able to handle two transformers there. We have one in place. But if the commercial areas that, that are for sale now along Route 4 develop, we're going to need that extra capacity. So that was in the, what, $4 million range, I think, the last transformer that we put in. So.
Is there any substation work, or any updating of those that we?
That's what we would do. If, if, if we bought that next transformer and put it in that electric sub, there would probably most likely be some updates that went along with it. Kind of like when we did the updates at the, at the main street substation a few years back.
Some highlights of the budget. Water breaks are projected to remain the same. There was the hiring of a blind man to replace a certain position in the department. And it's well, and it's create a first year apprentice position to plan for future department retirements. There's a capital lease purchase of a new line truck. The purchase price is estimated at $40,000. It would be a capital lease purchase, which would, other than that, that would be around $50,000 or so. There's also a purchase of a new vehicle for the department, an amount of $38,000. And that's actually carried forward from the fiscal year 2019 budget. And they also wanted to purchase a small utility truck for $14,000 to replace the aging department vehicle. And the lastly, there's the purchase of three warning sirens, part to be paid with by a $50,000 grant from PCO, and part paid from electric development fee assessments. And the village began working on that grant funding during fiscal year 2018.
Do you know where those are going?
We have a map that shows their coverage maps based off the size of the siren. So what we will have to do is essentially take a lot of our old sirens out. And then we have the exact location where we need to put the new ones, so that they cover each other all the way across. And then we'll take the smaller, older ones and move them south or to, to the south end of town, where they have smaller pockets that they have to try to be able to cover. But we have really good coverage when we get all done with moving those around.
So is the Broadus Road, is that all fixed? And are we still?
Pat, there's a problem with the line at Broadus Road. It works one time, it'll, it won't work the next time. It's the newest one that we have. I don't know what, if it's a problem with the signal. If they send, sometimes when they signal, send the signal twice, it'll go off. I don't know if it's a communication thing, line aside, or what it is. But we will, I think, address that when we go and do a revamp of the whole system and stuff, of at least being able to get some kind of a real link to it to make sure that it goes off in time. Now, the remember on that one that's out on Broadus Road, that is not inside the village limits. But the closest area to it is the new Cardinal Ridge Apartments and stuff. So it is an important one to us. But it is not inside the village limits at this time. And I think the township paid for that years back.
And the water and sewer revenue, and with the electric fund, water and sewer revenue is of our 96% of the, of the water and sewer charges. And that does include the rate increase that the village of, for a past couple months ago, to pass along the, was the buyer's rate increase of 14 cents per thousand gallons. And that was figured as of effective date of July 1st. So our customers won't see that on their bills until August, their bill to August 15. Water and sewer expenditures, again, the two largest components of those, representing 63% of the past month, water and sewer fund is the purchase of the water and sewer services. Personnel thinks of the next highest expenditure type, that's 15% in services and charges and capital expenditures are the next couple categories. Also included in here is the $89,707 that we talked about going in as a revenue in the electric fund wallet. You're seeing it there being expended out of the water and sewer fund. Cash on hand, water and sewer fund cash, unrestricted cash balance is right in the right range between the two and three month balance that we strive to achieve. And the budget, as we talked about before in the other two funds, there are some items that could happen that we look to those as being paid out of cash on hand. And that would be a crew time, paid to employee for estimated, at crew time payout, $101,000. And then the, the interfund loan payment, which since it relates to a 2015 obligation, we look as, as something like that, is not a normal operation, expenditure of operations. And that's $89,707. And there was also at the, to be paid out of construction costs for fiscal year 2019, we planned to purchase a booster pump, in the amount of $75,508. And since it was not expended out of our construction budget in fiscal year 2019, but it was still a necessary expense, that's being carried forward.
That pump specifications had to go through EPA for approval, and it took longer than expected. We've got that approval now. So we'll be in the process once this budget is passed.
Where's that pump going to go out here at the plant, or out here at the ground tank?
It will go out at the ground storage tank in the pump house out there. It will match, it will be a twin of the one that's there. Then they'll work combined instead of one of them all the time.
Budget highlights in the water and sewer fund. We're passing along the rate increase from our water supply of 14 cents per thousand gallon. Second year payments of the four-year repayment, repayment schedule to the electric fund. And the capital lease purchase of a mini excavator, in the amount of $44,335. And also the purchase of an equipment, in the amount of $10,800.
That mini excavator will help us a ton. It will, when we go to put a tap in, you're not digging up the whole, somebody's whole front yard, tearing up the street, having dirt all over the place. With something like this, it'd be easy to dig down, bore it across the street. And, you know, we had an example the other night of, of how we put in a new meter pit. And when they use the back truck for it, there's no digging for it at all either. And you just turn around and suck the stuff out in a hole, and then put the thing right down in the hole, connect it all up, and you haven't even disturbed the grass around it. So it'll make us more efficient, and it'll cost less to be able to go back and, and fix people's yards up.
So if we have the vector truck, we do still need a mini excavator in addition to that?
We do.
Could you help me understand that? I'm not questioning you, I just don't understand why we, I thought that was the point of the vector truck, but I'm, I'm no expert at all.
The vector truck, that we, we usually use it to locate the utilities that are, that are around. And we can turn around and jet water down and then suck that out. But when you're actually trying to dig down to be able to have a, a boring machine bore underneath, they need to have more dirt moved out. You, you could probably do it the same thing as you do it with a backhoe. It's just, it's more efficient.
And the backhoe's going to tear up more sidewalks and gutters.
It's a lot cheaper than a backhoe too, I would assume.
And we'd be able to use that backhoe, that we'll have two backhoes that we can use towards doing street repairs.
Other budget highlights, we have a capital project fund, the completion of our street project, yard waste and recycling and refuse program. This is the budget for that is the pulmonary increase a monthly reprogram, meaning from $2 to $4 a month. What that would cost, would pay for would be the cost of contracting out the leak bag pickup program, the branch pickup program. And pulmonary numbers show that for the fiscal year, that to be about $171,000. In my, in fiscal year, I'm talking May 1st to April 30th. So you're not going to see a full year of the contract expense in fiscal year 2000. That's a year contract, which is spent in 2020. The budget also uses, puts the use of village labor for the, we estimate for two and a half months before we con, you award your contracts, plus expensive on the street department staff for six months to do the street cleaning operation that is included as part of the green program revisions. And go along with that, there's capital lease purchase of a street speaker, which would have the net budget that, budget that come fiscal year 2020, about $30,000. And then lastly, we have the motorfield tax program. The amount that was, for the 2000 program is $346,016,161. Moving on to the end, we are, we're working on a budget documents, just in the draft stage right now. But this is just sort of the guideline, what you're going to find in there when we do get it completed. There's a budget summary which highlights the village budget in a narrative form. To begin with, there's an introduction section that has background information on the village, the budget process, the fund structure, and our financial policies. And then there's a exhibit section, and it includes information on fees, property taxes, revenues, expenditure trends, and long-term financial planning. And then finally, the budget information in a more detailed form than what I presented tonight, that we just went over, is found in the middle. And then at the very end, there's the capital improvement plan, which is a higher plan of things that we see coming to the dollars in the future.
Any questions?
And in two weeks, they will pass a draft budget, right?
They will pass the appropriation.
Appropriation ordinance.
There's a hearing at that, you published at 5:45, is that what you, did you publish the hearing at 5:45, or?
Yes.
So then the meeting will start right after that?
Yeah. Any questions?
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you, Sherry.
You always put in a tremendous amount of work to get through this. And, and I know your love for making presentations, so we certainly appreciate everything that, that goes into doing that.
Okay, utility oversight committee discussion. So we had a utility meeting last night. We had an individual come before us, and she filled out the form that, we have the leak adjustment form. We tried to dig down to the bottom of it, couldn't get to the bottom of it. We had some takeaways. So Pat had some takeaways, and, and the individual had some takeaways. So we're going to probably, we're going to try to schedule another utility meeting in two weeks to kind of get those questions answered. But I can give you the gist of what, what happened. She was gone for a two-week period.
Two months.
Or two-month period. And she had 21, some, 21,000 gallons. Her normal usage was not even close to that. It was around 1,400.
1,400, yeah.
But we kind of figured out that she has a water backup for her sump pump. But she didn't seem to think that was it. The village employees have been out three different times. We found, they found the leaks. Sump moved when the plumber wiggled it. So as we all know, when sumps go out, sometimes they can kick back in if the switch gets stuck. So it appears that it was maybe her water backup. Those use a ton of gallons of water to eject the groundwater. But she was going to, she had a plumber come in, and she said the sump is fine. He found no leaks either. She now has the meter, she now has the meter that reads hourly, and her consumption is back to the normal levels where it was before. She's asked for a leak adjustment. Once we hear and we get her, her information, Pat's information thrown in there, we'll come back to this committee and make a recommendation, which you guys can take or not, whether to grant a leak adjustment. During the meeting, we found out there was another citizen that could possibly have a leak issue as well. And Pat is aware of that, and we told.
And our office has mailed those forms to that.
Okay. So that person's been mailed the forms. So hopefully they see we have that meeting, and they can show up to present that as well. So at the next meeting, we may have a couple of leak adjustment things we need to address. We asked about the chloramines. Everything is in place for the chloramines. The company that has to train the guys out there to do it have not been out there to train them. So it's, it's still soon. And that's what we have so far. And that was pretty much the gist. Anything to add?
No, that was it. Okay, I, I have a question or a couple issues. So on the leak adjustment situation, it doesn't sound like to me that there was really a leak, in quotation marks. So my only concern or comment on that is where do we draw the line? And where does that slope start to happen? Where it was my sump pump, but it ran up 22,000 gallons, or, you know, because that was what I believed that leak adjustment to be for was, you know, unfortunate running toilet or leaky faucet, not these potentially other sloping issues that.
So we'll make a.
Actually, the line is drawn here. That's why we've, we've changed the policy the way that we do it. It's brought back to the public board with elected officials to make a final decision.
And so then what we'll do is we'll hear her out for the rest of it, because a lot of it, the dates didn't add up, match up a lot of things. So once we get all the information, then we'll come back to you guys, and then we'll have that discussion, and then we'll, yes, that, that's a very valid point.
Well, you can't get insurance for a leak, but you can get insurance for a sump pump failure.
Correct. So that's where we're at with that. And that's all I have on utility oversight commission, committee discussion. And then we also asked, as, as the committee, we asked for the debt servicing for the future years. We've asked for that for a little bit. And we asked for that again, just to see, because we know the debt is going to be increasing, just to kind of plan ahead.
South Sanglin?
Yes.
Schedule's in the back of their financial statements. It's required note disclosure, so it's right there.
Right.
Grab it quickly, I can show you right where it is.
Okay, good enough. AD transition plan committee update?
We did not meet since we did not have members. So now we have that resolved. So I plan on meeting on Tuesday.
All right.
Six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock, right here, yeah.
Public property and recreation committee discussion?
That, that committee meets every other month. Did not have a meeting since our last meeting. We did though, however, have a park comprehensive plan on June 5th, Wednesday, at the library. Thanks to those of you that were able to attend and provide your input. Appreciate any other input. Appreciate any other input from those that were unable to attend. If you reach out to me, I can make sure that you can get the concept drawings, if you will, from the engineer or architect. They're just ideas, they're just to try to get your brain to move in and figure out what you want or what types of things might be possible with our public, with our public lands. I've shared those on my Facebook page, but I don't know if we could potentially share the drawings on the village website or any other means. But regardless, please reach out to me if you'd like to see them or have any discussion about them.
Thank you. Public comments on village business. So I've got Darlene and Bonnie. Okay, not now. Anyone else? All right. Schedule the meetings, committee the whole, six fifteen, July ninth. Do we have any reason to go into closed session? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Trustee Scherchel, second?
I'll second.
Trustee Mann, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And if, if any of the trustees want a copy of utility stuff that the lady in.
I'll wait for your presentation.